Can reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss some personnel matters. We can all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have introductions?
Dave Hurst, Chris Meyer.
Wendy Sampson.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Meredith Muirery.
Willow Bear.
Jonathan Fishbein.
And Judy Kehoe.
And Ms. Beck is not able to be here this evening. Do we have any PIG students with us tonight? Welcome. Your obligation is to stay until nine o'clock or until the meeting ends, whichever comes first. And when it is done, if you have papers that need to be signed, bring them on up to any member of the Board. There are also sign-out sheets that you should sign on the table. Okay? Thank you to Mr. Klugman and to the middle school for hosting us this evening as we continue our tour around the district. Particularly enjoy seeing the scarecrows out again in the front of the school. First up is approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 2nd, 2019, regular Board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next, reports. Do we have anyone here from the Student Senate tonight? If you can come up to, I think there's a microphone over there.
Today, we had our first meeting for Student Senate with the freshmen. So we're just getting used to the freshmen right now in our homeroom. Yeah, so we discussed, first, we discussed the pep rally that happened like two weeks ago. We talked about what we liked, disliked, because Student Senate's going to be running the pep rally next year. So we just talked about that. And then Spirit Week. And we're running the Snowball Dance in February, so we wanted to get some ideas like to get going for that. The Backpack Program, it's running very well right now. Kirsten and Caroline, they're right here. They're, uh, they're in charge of the Backpack Program, so they're doing a great job. We're working to get some like healthier food options. We've been talking to some of the like local apple orchards, and we're going to talk to maybe price choppers, see if we can get donations for that. So, there was one more thing. Let me think. Um, oh, we're working like to get some information about the courtyard. We're trying to put in the courtyard so students can go there during their free periods, just like to get outside. So we're going to wait till after the construction's done in the school and see what we can do for that. So, yep, that's basically where we're at right now.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one, one suggestion for the Backpack Program.
Yep.
So every month, the different schools or departments do the food drives. If you wanted to have them include some fresh options, you might want to rethink the list and ask them to do that if that's an option. It might help with some of the healthier items that you're looking to get.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, next is our superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. So I wanted to do a quick update of construction, and Mr. Nolte is in the back if you have any questions. So I'll just go through some of the major items. We had a facilities committee meeting just prior to that, so I'm sure someone will report on that. The high school varsity baseball field is continuing on time. Fencing work and gratings occurring with the goal of sodding next week, right? Just in time for, to be ready for the spring. The toy, the bathrooms out there having some finish work, and that should be ready for spring as well. High school auditorium, you can see the big loft is being enclosed shortly, hopefully before snow flies. And we're still expecting a mid-April 2020 completion. So, the high school LMC, some of the work is continuing. Sheet rocks being installed. The decorative ceiling ribbons, which are for acoustics, are expected to start next week. And all the furniture and casework has been ordered and on schedule, so we're a little off from where we had intended to be at the start of the project, but we're still anticipating end of November for completion. So, that'll be exciting. And the high school kitchen, painting and ceiling work is advancing. We're expecting still a mid-November completion. And Alisa Isar, Food Service Director, is already working on getting that back in, up and running fully, so. And then we're going to, because we want to try and get a head start on some of the other work, Greg and the staff are working with the construction managers and contractors to see what work we could do during the remainder of this year, so we're not trying to fit it all in during the summer of next year. So whatever we can kind of get going on would be advantageous. So also related to construction, I know Mr. Nolte received a call from Albany County Health Department inquiring about construction and the, um, what we're doing to maintain indoor air quality. We, during asbestos, earlier asbestos abatement, we have third-party monitoring that we're required to hire to verify compliance and check air quality. All of the areas that are currently under construction are partitioned off from the school, and engineering controls, we have exhaust fan, physical barriers, and obviously daily cleaning are put in place. And then the construction managers, as well as our own staff, do visual inspections and are constantly checking to make sure there's no issues. And we also have a process for if there's any construction-related concerns, a process to report that to our staff. Also, we had a homecoming in our Hall of Fame induction, so I'd like to congratulate our newest members of the Hall of Fame, Terry Egan from the class of 1977, and Dr. Eric Powers from the class of 1965. There was a small reception prior to the football game, and some of their family came, and some of their former classmates, so it was a very nice event. I'd like to thank Heather Coleman and the high school administration for putting that together. It's a nice event. And finally, I'd like to ask Kathy Johnston, where is she? To give a quick update on the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. They met recently, so she wanted to just share where, where they are.
Yes, can you hear me okay? Yeah. So, this is the second year for our Parent Advisory Committee, and we had our first meeting of the year, October 1st, and we put a steering committee together. We had about 22 parents volunteer to be part of the steering committee. And we've put together, excuse my allergies, sorry. We've put three major programs together for this year. The first one will be in November, and the topic is going to be on mainstreaming and inclusion. And for each of the committees that we put together, we have staff representatives and three to four parent members who are going to be helping us with the work. In January or February, we're going to do our second presentation, and that's going to be Special Ed 101 slash IEP 101. So really geared towards helping families understand the whole process that goes into special education and the IEP process. And they had asked for something called IEP at a glance, so that will be something that we'll be discussing that night. And then in March or April, we're going to be doing a program on our social-emotional learning and behavioral information that we're rolling out in all of the schools. Excuse me. In addition to those three major programs, our parents asked that we do some ongoing parent support groups, and we're going to be having some counseling support as parents discuss some of the things that are really difficult for them as they go through the process of being involved in special education. We're also continuing our work on looking at our reading program, and parents are going to be involved in that as well. So, that's what we set up for the year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one just last announcement, we just had a meeting yesterday. The middle school and high school No Place For Hate groups are organizing a community walk for, it'll be scheduled for October 29th from 6:00 to 7:00 in the evening. It'll be on the track, so everyone can participate. And there'll be more details sent out to staff in the community. It's a K-12 event, so we're inviting everyone to come and participate, and there will be glow sticks just in time for Halloween, so it should be fun. So, yeah. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Jody?
Oh, I did have one question regarding the high school cafeteria. I was just wondering how food service has been handling the last month? How has it been going?
Um, I don't know if you have any financials on that. I know that they have had the food trucks there regularly. They have used the grills Fridays to do burgers and things, so there's been still a good amount of students and staff, a lot of the construction workers taking advantage of the food, but certainly, I'm sure there's probably some shortfalls in revenue as we expected.
Yeah, I had just looked at the September revenues last week, and they're a little bit below where we were last year, which we expected that they would be down. So nothing catastrophic, but a little bit below where we were last year. I'm meeting with Alisa in early November to look at the first two months of data and see how we're doing. I mean, the numbers are better than she expected on the food trucks, but there's not a large margin to the district on those sales. It's really just to provide a good hot option for the students and to keep them interested in the cafeteria during the construction.
So it sounds like the students are happy with the services being provided?
Yeah. And I think to Alisa and her staff's credit, they've been really creative in accommodating and trying to come up with different things that will still be appealing to students even without the, you know, with the limited options that they have. So they've really done a great job.
They've kept a really nice salad bar. They have half sandwiches and subs that are available. They just rolled out hot soup, one or two different choices each day, and then the, you know, bagels and other things that are available. So, yeah, there seem to be good lines for the better part of the lunch periods.
So really, what we now need to do is have Greg make sure all the construction people buy more food.
No, I offered bonus points if it was done sooner.
They definitely like the food trucks. I see them out there all the time.
It's a hearty meal.
That's great. Any other questions?
Next is the Board Report. I'll be attending the NISBA convention next week along with Willow and Meredith. I'm also attending the pre-conference communications workshop, which is focusing on emotional intelligence and creative thinking. So I'm hoping there'll be some interesting things to bring back. And while I'm there, I think I'm the official delegate to the annual business meeting, and I did take a look through the proposed resolutions, and for the most part, I didn't see anything particularly controversial. A couple that jumped out at me, there's one essentially to essentially reaffirm NISBA's commitment to encouraging school boards to put policies in place to encourage inclusivity within their districts, which I thought works well with the generation-ready conversations that we've been having. And then there was one that I thought was interesting, to support proposals to authorize municipalities to install speed zone cameras in school zones. And I was curious if anyone had any thoughts about that one.
Are these like the photo stoplights? Is that what you're talking about?
I believe so. It's not particularly specific. It just says cameras, but...
That would be interesting, because they, you know, I don't know if it's just cameras per se, but I know, I've heard from parents, particularly that live right around the elementary schools, that they would love some speed bumps put in, particularly when their parents are coming in for schools out around 4:55, whatever, it just closes. Sometimes there are some parents moving at a rather high rate of speed to make sure they get there on time. And so some of the neighbors around, like Slingel in particular, were saying that maybe they could put a bump or two there just to remind them that, you know, it is still a 30 mile an hour road.
Any other thoughts on that one?
There, my concern would be obviously the same problem we have in the high school parking lot, where you put a bump in and you create havoc for snowplows. However, I did discover that there are now bumps that they make that cover a longer period of road, about 12 feet, but you're going up level and going down, and because of the way it's constructed, it's going to slow you down. So that's something that, you know, we might consider, you know, asking the town about because it won't, it won't interfere with the snowplows.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not something that has to be taken out every year like the bumps in the high school parking lot.
Do you have any? Resolutions about cameras? I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on that?
Right, but I'm, I'm thinking that...
I mean, that as an alternative?
That as an alternative. I don't have a problem with cameras, so long as there's some enforcement attached to them.
Does the resolution create an obligation for the district to fund?
No.
Cameras at every location?
No.
Well, Albany did it, it don't, didn't Albany do it, the, the city of Albany do it at no charge to the city? And they keep a percentage of the revenue, except they never got any, I think, because they didn't issue enough tickets. But it's one thing to think about, because that way it doesn't cost the town or the school district anything.
Mm-hmm. Would you or Wendy like to report out on the facilities meeting?
I can do it.
Okay.
That was quick.
I reported last time. It's your turn.
Before the Executive Committee meeting, the Facilities Committee met, and we went through, I believe, about 30 change orders for various items. We did, with due respect, held the, the construction managers' people to, their feet to the fire. And Greg's sort of nodding back there. But the, the truth of the matter is they're doing a really good job of being careful of our, our funding, and I'm certainly satisfied that the changes are changes that are important and necessary, and I'm impressed with the fact that this time, so that we don't find sewer lines and other things in the wrong places when we do another bond, that we're taking photos to make sure that we know where lines are and electrical wires and pipes and things like that, so that we don't run into some of these cost overruns in the future.
Thank you. Anyway, if something else you'd like to report?
Sure. Two things. I attended the Hall of Fame Awards banquet, I guess you could say, at the high school on a homecoming weekend, and it really was a nice event. It was neat to hear from people who went through the school a few years back, and just to hear their stories and to see them walk in, and, you know, there were certain parts of the building they remembered, and certain parts that were brand spanking new to them. But it was just neat to meet and hear the stories. On a way less serious note, I took my two boys to Eagle Elementary, to their playground. That is the coolest playground in the Capital District.
I told you!
I'm just throwing it out there, and I feel bad for all the Eagle parents that are now going to have tons of people there, but like Eagle used to be lacking in the playground world, and I have two elementary kids, and that was...
I'm going to have to check it out.
Oh, if you have an elementary kid, you need to go to Eagle Elementary. It is out of this world.
I...
It's out of this way. It's incredible. It's just wonderful.
Checking out any age. I also attended the Homecoming Hall of Fame induction event that was very lovely, and I learned a lot about the district and the history of the community that I didn't know before from people who'd been here for many years. So it was very interesting. And Nora said that the homecoming dance went pretty well, so, yay.
Since we're in the middle school, and I see Mark Warford back there, I just want to say to Mark that you run a great program with the gardens and the students, every time you have students selling the, the produce out in the Saturday farmer's market, they are well-spoken, professional, kind, courteous, the everything that you want students to do to represent the school well. And so thank you for the program that you put together. It's really wonderful.
Willow, Meredith, did you have anything you wanted to add? Next on the agenda is our public hearing on the District-wide Safety Plan. Tonight, we are holding the public hearing on our proposed revised district safety plans as required by education law. At this time, I invite any members of the public to speak who wish to offer up comments, either for or against, on the proposed policy. I ask that you please state your name for the record prior to offering your remarks.
And the microphone.
And the guest at the microphone. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the presentation by the Middle School Coordinated Care Team.
Good evening, everyone. So, you might correct that this is active on your mobile phone.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Michelle.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Klugman. I'm the principal of middle school. It's my pleasure to be here. The slideshow that you're about to see was coordinated through all the hands of the people that you're going to see on the next slide. So without any further ado, I'd like to make introductions of the folks that are here that are a part of our Coordinated Care Team, and we'll explain what that means on the next slide. So it's a big group, and when you think about the mental health concerns that affect our building, the middle school, just a quick couple of metrics. We have 1,000 or 40 or so students in the middle school. We serve three grades, six, seven, and eight, as most of our students know. So this group surrounds all of our students and any concerns that come up through either a mandated counseling structure or a non-mandated counseling structure. So in the events of students' lives, you're looking at the people who are the go-to people for our students when they have crises or just need to talk to someone. And I'd like to make introductions. So for the folks I'm about to introduce, if you would just kind of wave a little bit and so we can put a face with a name for the board and they get to know who you are, all right? So first up, our counselors, Ms. China Marcucci, Ms. Carly Young, who's behind me, Mr. Matt Farnin, and Mr. Andy Lenhart had a conflict tonight, so he could not make it. Our psychologist, we have two in the building, Ms. Rose Paglis and Ms. Caitlin Cleary, who's also behind me. Our two social workers, Jess Van Wermer and Ms. Lisa Hertz. We have a new service this year that Kristen Connor's going to talk a little bit about later. So Chris Janz von Rentsberg is a clinician that's split between the middle school and high school, which brings up an important point. As we designed this presentation, we have a Coordinated Care Team in each of the seven buildings in the district. So if the Board after the presentations has any questions about how our structure that we're going to present here at the middle school is the same or different from the elementary level, there's a number of people that'll be presenting tonight that can handle those questions. Our supervisors, so we have two CSE chairs because of their coordination of the various members of our group, Ms. Sarah Flannery, who's to my left, Ms. Heather Quinn, who is actually the elementary CSE chair, but she works with our psychologist, Ms. Kristen Connor, who's our K-12 counseling supervisor, and you'll hear from her in a moment, and then our three administrators in the building, myself, Ms. Jackie Monroe, and Mr. Mark Warford. And then, of course, we have Kathy, who's our Director of Special Ed Services, who oversees almost the entirety of this domain. And then, of course, our nursing staff, who on a daily basis is an active part of this group. So without any further ado, I'm going to advance to the next slide, and I'm going to talk about, or turn it over to Kristen Connor, who's going to talk more about, you know, what the Coordinated Care Team means and how they service our students. So Kristen Connor.
Thank you. Thanks for the introductions, and thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to present. It's funny, when Mr. Klugman pulled us all together to discuss this presentation topic, we needed to reflect a few minutes about what life was like before Coordinated Care Team. So for those of you students who are sitting in the audience, it's probably going to be a little bit new to you, and maybe some of you can reflect on what's happening at the high school. So four years ago, when I was hired, I was hired as a school counseling supervisor, and I was able to work with not only our elementary, middle, and high school students, but also the school counselors. And so during that time, we were able to really pull together like a needs assessment. The mental health concerns in our district was growing, and through conversations and support with our district leadership team and the Board of Education, we were able to hire more staff to respond to those needs of our students and families. So my first year here, we hired two elementary school counselors, as well as a high school student assistance counselor. From there, as a work in progress, we continued to look at the needs of our students, and then determined that we needed more staff. And so just this past year, we were able to hire a high school social worker. So given now that we've hired all of these providers, we now are able to look at the holistic view of the types of services that we provide here in our district. And so with the commitment that we've made as a district to a more unified model, grew the Coordinated Care Team. So Mr. Klugman mentioned that we have a Coordinated Care Team at all three levels in every single building. And so tonight, we're just going to kind of give a snapshot of what life is like here at the middle school. Because it is a big building and we are fully staffed, we have the ability to service all of our students. So this slide here just shows a snapshot of the roles and responsibilities of really three of our core members of the Coordinated Care Team. So our school counselors, our school social workers, and our school psychologists. What Mr. Klugman showed was that the team is comprised of more staff, but when we talk about the delivery of services, so responding to students' needs, these are the folks that are working directly with our students. What we realized as a group with this kind of Venn diagram is that the school-based mental health experts that are here are able to provide a safer school environment that is really conducive to learning. So by looking at the needs of the students, the needs of our families, faculty, and staff, the conversations that continue to happen and the work that they're doing allows them to really form in a teaming structure and support everyone in need. So although all three groups deliver similar services, such as counseling, assessment, crisis intervention, and management, they are all very unique. So just to give you an idea, our school counselors focus on helping students in the academic, career, social-emotional domains, and they promote and really enhance student success. So they work with all students. Our school social workers are really focused more on the family and community systems of support, and they bring a clinical approach when working with our students and families. And with our school psychologists, who specialize in really not only psychology and education, but they're able to discuss more about the learning, behavior, motivation, assessment, and evaluative tools to support students, not only in the gen ed population, but also in special education. So that's just really a snapshot of what these folks do. It's hard to put into words what they do daily because they never stop moving. They're always responding to the needs of students in this building. Talking about really the, the multiple data points that, that we discuss as a team on a regular basis, we look at every student as an individual, right? Because every student has their own story. Every student's family has their own story. And so what we look to do is to problem-solve and to find interventions and strategies that work for all students. We talk about student success. We talk about what's needed, what resources are needed to provide the next level of intervention and services for our students. The multiple points of entry, Mr. Warford's going to actually cover with some of the committees that we work together on, but one of the things that I think is important to mention is that we're very fortunate here at the middle school because we have a meeting structure where we get together regularly. And what does that mean? Every week, there's an attendance meeting that he'll, he'll discuss. There is a mental health committee meeting once a month, child study team meeting, not to mention the informal conversations that these folks are having on a daily basis, multiple times a day even, in each other's offices or in the classrooms. So when you talk about coordinated care, you're not only talking about the collaborative care, but you're talking about an increased level of communication, which is why we're really so successful right now. One of the things that I think we need to probably show, and again, it's a work in progress, are the multi-tiered levels of support. And so I know that you all know that we've got an RTI for Behavior team here at the middle school. We are working still to continue the initiative that we started a couple of years ago with RTI for Behavior. We have that at the elementary level that carries over here to the middle school. And so... And so it's really a work in progress when we talk about data points with attendance, with discipline, and with mental health concerns. And I mentioned that at every level, we have a coordinated care team. I think it's really important that we do focus on the developmental needs of our students. And Ms. Young and Cleary are going to talk about really what is so unique about the middle school.
Hi. So the middle school years are full of their own unique challenges and obstacles. So Carla and I are going to speak to what those are, both internally within our students and the changes that they're facing in their environment. So the following points in regard to internal development of our students were taken from Dr. Madeline Levine, who is a professor out of Stanford University. She's also an author. So according to Dr. Levine, the developmental leap that our students are going through is in trying to establish their independence. So because they are trying things for the first time that they may have not tried before, or they're asserting their independence in ways they never have, they may be lacking intact. Some of these attempts may appear immature, and they may appear to be done without empathy for others. All of our students are going through puberty, which does take, on average, three years, so that adds some other challenges that they're facing. They may be sleepy, they may be moody, they may be very profoundly impacted by some peer interactions that we think may be somewhat negligible, they're vigilant about their privacy. There's also a lot of changes going on in the brain. So you have your prefrontal cortex, that's the adult thinking part, so that's the part that is responsible for planning ahead, for remaining organized, for weighing out options, for looking at risk versus reward, and that's not developing until eighteen to twenty-four years old. And at this point, it's outpaced by the limbic system, which is the part of the brain that processes emotions, social information, and it seeks out risk and reward. So when you combine these two things together, we get a brain that is very high on sensation-seeking, impulsive, and has underdeveloped judgment. So when you add mental health to this mix, too, things get really challenging for our students, and they do need a lot of support from us at school. So I'm going to hand it over to Carla, who's going to go over some of the environmental changes that are happening to our students.
Thank you. Yeah, so Caitlin talked to you about some of the internal things going on for our middle school students, but there's lots of changes externally that our middle school students are going through. And I think when we look at this as board members, as students, as parents and teachers, we say, oh, yeah, we know all of this. This is kind of common sense that our middle schoolers are coming to a new building, that there's more academic pressure put on them, that attendance can be more challenging. But I feel it's important to talk about because it's always good to remind ourselves what our middle schoolers are going through on a daily basis and all of the things that they're juggling all at once as they change nine periods a day, that they're balancing getting to school on time and attending every day. That can be a challenge for middle school students. As I said before, that academics, of course, every year gets more rigorous and more challenging. Also, as they come to the middle school, students are getting more used to checking their grades on Aspen, seeing number grades. That's new for them, and that takes some work. All right? Also, the social pressure, our middle school students are becoming more aware of the social pressures. Many of them, as I'm sure you know, are on social media, and so that can add to that stress. Their family dynamics are changing, and what I mean by that is that as they become more independent and their parents are trying to figure out their role of having their student be more independent while also having control of the situation, which can be a tough balance. Our students are also becoming more aware of their social, emotional development. They're starting to think about growth mindset versus fixed mindset, their resiliency, and they're starting to explore that a little bit more. So with that, we come in as school counselors to assist our students as they go through those typical transitions. All right? So this model is similar to the RTI model that Kristen was talking to you about before. And I'm not sure if you can see it, but down here, the green is tier one. So as school counselors, we follow the ASCA national model, and that's American School Counseling model. In tier one, this is for all of our students. This is the direct and indirect services that we provide to all of our students. So this would be our classroom lessons on emotional regulation, our annual reviews, our character education. All of our students receive those services. Parent presentations, everything that all of our students are provided with for that support in going through their transitions. Some students need a little bit more, so that's when we move on to tier two. This is when we start having more in-depth conversations with our team of teachers. This is when we start reaching out to the social workers to consult with them and get their support. This is when maybe we're having parents come in a little bit more, and we're starting to look at outside referrals. Sometimes that's not enough, and we have students that are getting into the crisis level, tier three. And this is when we are adding the students maybe at mandated service, which you'll hear about, to work with our social workers. We're starting to work with community resources to get those students through whatever crisis they may be going through. You'll find that students will kind of go back and forth between the tiers. So that's why the coordinated care team is so important, because we're always communicating with each other. Where is the student at? How are they handling their transitions, their typical stressors? Are they able to deal with it?
So what does that, the referral process, look like? We try to simplify it as much as possible. We have conversations in our mental health committee team meetings, we have conversations in our department meetings, and we talk about students who need that next tier, that next level of intervention. And so oftentimes, when our school counselors who have done, who have exhausted all of their resources, right? They've gone into the classroom, they've run groups, they've made contact with the families, and they've worked collaboratively with our other staff members, they will then refer those students to me, where I now manage the scheduling of the students in this building as to where they are placed in a non-mandated session. What does non-mandated mean? It means that we do not have a formalized document to provide a level of service. We still have a targeted goal and outcome when we provide a non-mandated counseling service, right? Because it's a short-term, solution-focused-based counseling session, but we don't have to formalize it through a special ed process. So I handle all of those types of referrals. We have conversations about who can manage the next student in their caseload. We discuss if there is a need for an additional assessment or evaluation, and if there is, we then move on to the child study team, where we have already looked at all of the interventions that have, that are possible and that have taken place, and then we work through our CSC chairperson and the committee to then look to mandate those services. I think it's important for both of our school social workers to discuss the difference between the mandated and non-mandated sessions. Here in the building, we have multiple special ed programs where students in those programs do receive counseling on either an individual or group basis, sometimes both, depends on the individual needs of that student. So they work with both those mandated students, as well as our school psychologists, and then also take that first tier of non-mandated students in their schedule. And that can either be in an individual basis or a small group. So I'll invite them both up to discuss the difference between them.
Hi, how are you? So the similarities between the non-mandated and mandated counseling are that they're regularly scheduled counseling sessions with a psychologist or social workers. Some of them are weekly, bi-weekly, monthly. In a group, individually, I see that we wrote student progress is reviewed each year, but we really review the students more regularly than that because we meet so often as a group. We have regular communication between service providers outside and their teams, their teachers, their counselors. The differences between mandated and non-mandated is that mandated services are required by their 504 or their IEP, and they're necessary due to the impacts, to the educational impacts of a student's identified disability. Non-mandated services, I think we find that the benefits of non-mandated is that we're able to meet with students for smaller durations. So for example, if a student is experiencing a trauma or a mental health obstacle or a loss and needs to be re-entered into the school in a more supportive way, we're able to maybe meet with them for a twelve-week period, and that also allows our schedules to meet more students.
Yeah.
And also, the last part was the crisis intervention. It allows us to support counselors with crises that come up, as they often do in this building.
Yes, that we can't schedule time for, unfortunately. So this slide just kind of covers what everyone has said about just kind of that coordination. I just keep hearing that word, collaboration, and I think that's so important to highlight because really what we're doing, we're collaborating and we're bringing all the different team members together. So none of these decisions are made in a vacuum, which I think is so great about the team approach. We're involving parents, we're involving teachers, we're involving administrators to really make these decisions to help meet the needs of the students and to provide supports wherever necessary, also coordinating with any outside supports. A lot of our students may have outside medical providers or mental health providers, that we want to make sure we're all on the same page so that we're best meeting everyone's needs. And the last piece is important, too, that we don't have a formula that says, okay, this person is experiencing this issue, we're going to give them this amount of counseling. It's really so individualized, which is nice about the flexibility of some of our non-mandated students. We can really meet them where they're at and provide what they need, whatever that may look like. So given all of the counseling that we're providing, we also need to find time to make sure that we are up to speed with professional development. There are oftentimes trainings that occur not only outside of school, but we're able to also bring in folks in the district to provide training for not only the school counselors, but also the school social workers and school psychologists, since they're all delivering counseling services. So some of the things that we have done in the past few years, certainly the ACEs training that both the high school and middle school have gone through, all of the faculty, certainly our diversity and equity training with the Generation Ready. There is so much that work that is going on, and it is a work in progress, but something that is certainly a priority. We have also brought in our legal counsel to discuss some of the more challenging topics and situations so that we know how to best handle those. We also contract with a behavioral specialist, Kelly Brock. Kelly Brock has come in not only here at the middle school, but also at the elementary level to discuss some of that common language that needs to be carried over from the elementary to the middle school level through our RTI for Behavior Initiative. She's also come in to talk about classroom management, because as we know, that's a big component when we're addressing behavior challenges. Mental health training, our nurses have actually gone through a series of trainings because we know that when students don't feel well, and that could look like a whole host of issues, headaches, stomach aches, it could be because they have anxiety, or there's something going on at home, and they're trying to escape. And so the nurse is really a safe place for them to go, where they're getting the support that they need and not having to talk about some of the issues that they're facing. We often go up to four wins because they provide a level of training that we really can't bring here to the district. And we've also utilized our CASDA membership by going to not only the Hope Theory Conference, but also the Alternative Ed Roundtable Forums. So there's been a whole host of professional development that we've already established here in the district and that we continue to work on. And I think lastly, what we forgot to mention was that we are continually bringing in outside providers so that it's an opportunity for us to meet them and greet them and know what their specialty is, so that we have a comprehensive list of resources and providers that we can always go to when a family is in need.
What is the Hope Theory Conference?
So Hope Theory Conference that we went to...
You want the mic?
Okay. Landing on this? So the Hope Theory Conference that we went to focused a lot on gratitude and resilience and finding ways to sort of plant those seeds in your building. So one of the things that we did starting this year was we had a board down by the cafeteria for all students to see as they began on the first day of school, and every, or most teachers, I would say, and staff went and they wrote what their hope for their students was for the year. So it's just putting out those positive messages of gratitude and resilience.
Sarah, if you want to come up. We've already talked about the coordination of how to schedule our students in these time slots for counseling. I think the one piece that we didn't touch upon, though, is that in this middle school, it's a teaming structure. And so our school counselors are very fortunate to go multiple times a week to a team meeting where concerns about students, whether it's academic, behavior, social, emotional, are brought up and addressed. And so having that time and having that ability to have that referral and then poll those students, I think is a big piece that the middle school is really good at. You know, at the elementary level, they've got their classroom teacher, and then they've got their coordinated care team, which includes the school nurse, right? The school counselor, psychologist, and social worker. At the high school, it's sometimes impossible to coordinate all of the teachers and the special teachers, and it just becomes really challenging and complicated. So by having a teaming structure here, these folks are able to have their finger on the pulse and know what's going on with all of our students.
So at a certain point, we might decide that our students have kind of worked their way through the tiers of support that we can offer through what we call the non-mandated structure, and the students may end up being referred to CSC or a 504 accommodation plan for what we have referred to as formalized services. And once a student receives formalized or mandated services, then they become part of our annual review process where there's formal meetings that are held to evaluate how the students are doing in terms of goals. We always set a goal, always with a goal, through IEP or 504 plans for increased independence, and there is an evaluation and assessment process that is attached to students' programs once they become a student referred to Committee for Special Education or for 504 Accommodation Plan.
So it's really always a work in progress for us when we talk about the coordination, when we talk about scheduling, and that's why it's so important that we work so closely together. And although Sarah is not supervising any one of those three counseling providers, Sarah works very closely with all three because oftentimes we are making those quick referrals, and those mandated students may need some adjustments. And so we're lucky to have someone here full-time in the building. Mr. Warford will come and talk about our committee.
Okay, all right. Let me go back. All right, so I really just want to give a shout-out to our school nurses because our school nurses are really on the front line. When you have students that are experiencing difficulties, oftentimes that manifests itself in very physical symptoms, where they're either treating in the nurse's office, or they're the main line of communication that we have with any outside providers. So, you know, health concerns that are impacting students' ability to participate, they can communicate with the doctors in ways that we can't or outside providers. They can relay or convey observations that staff has in regards to the kids, to the outside providers, that they may not hear. They're able to communicate about medications and interventions. Are they working? Are they not? And a big thing is attendance concerns. It is not uncommon for us to talk with outside physicians, and they're really not aware of just how much school that student is missing. Their symptoms are conveyed, but yet their attendance in school isn't clearly communicated, so nurses are able to do that. So as part of that, we have our attendance committee. And basically what this is, once a week, myself, Jackie Monroe, one counselor, our SRO officer, and our nurse will sit down, and there's three things we look at. One is the New York State Cognos Report, which is the overall attendance for the school year. We have an Aspen report that's generated that tells you if there's three days in a row or more that are missing. So if they're out, that's an automatic red flag, the nurse wants to call home. And then we also look at thirty-day attendance. So let's say, for instance, you have a student that's really having some separation anxiety, and they miss every Monday for three weeks. They're not going to show up on a New York State Cognos Report because they're not ten percent absent. They're not going to show up on the Aspen Report because they weren't sick for three days in a row, but yet we notice they were out three days in the last thirty days, and then we can connect the dots. So the attendance committee really catches students at the very beginning when we've got some problems and we can move forward from there. And then Mike heads our mental health committee, which is basically everybody that you've seen here today. We all jam into the room that you had your conference in before you came here. So imagine all of us in a room together for an hour, looking at all of the different things that happen. You know, how do kids need to be supported? How does staff need to be supported? And so in the end, we've really been able to make some inroads. So however, even with all that, sometimes we need more. So there you go.
Which leads us to our last slide. So this year, as you all know, we contracted with Saratoga Center for the Family, and through those... And through those efforts, we have been able to hire a clinician who is split between both the middle school and high school. This clinician is able to meet with up to about 30 students and families. So far, he is about half-capacity because we have to go through a referral process. But what he's able to deliver that we haven't been able to do before is that family component. So students can work with us every day, all day, but when they leave the school building and they go home, sometimes they have really challenging situations at home. And so what this clinician is able to provide is that level of support, not only for the student, but for the family as well. And so the students will meet with him, as well the family, and it'll be an ongoing partnership until either that student doesn't need the services and can become more independent, or he may have to refer to someone who has more of a specialization, depending on what the need is for the student or family. So, so far, it's been a really great resource. We're very lucky to have him. He was not able to be here tonight, but is doing some really great work. So thank you for supporting that. That really concludes what our coordinated care team does and is. I think it's really hard to put into words what these folks do on a day-to-day basis. If you ever walked into this building, you would never see any one of them sitting still because as you know, kids are always moving, as are these guys. We're very lucky to have a full staff here and we're very lucky that we are working towards a goal of really communicating and collaborating on a daily basis. So, thank you for your support. Questions?
First, thank you for, all of you, for coming tonight and for sharing the information with us. I'm curious, it sounds like one of the reasons that it works so well here at the middle school is because of the team approach that you have here. And I'm just wondering if you can speak for a couple minutes on how, if, it works at the high school where there isn't that setup?
So, I think the teaming approach is really the, like, the positive aspect here, right? That's very unique for a middle school. And not all middle schools have the teaming structure, but here, it really does work. At the high school, we do have a full staff, right? So we've got seven high school counselors, two that are dedicated to the ninth graders, five that are dedicated to our 10 through 12 grades, a student assistance counselor, and two full-time social workers. We also have two school psychologists, one who's there full-time and the other who come, who's split between Elsmere and the high school. So we do meet as a mental health committee once a month, just like we do here. Very similar conversations. What's the hot topic? This morning we met and we talked about vaping, right? Because that's really a hot topic, right? So that's something that we discuss. We did, we talk about attendance. The Cognos Data Warehouse that Mr. Warford just mentioned, that's something that we do at the high school. The difference is that we don't have access to teachers in that teaming structure. So what our school counselors do is coordinate and facilitate case conferences. So during period nine, they'll often call the teachers in and the parents to have a conversation about what's happening with that student. So it's not as streamlined, it's not as convenient, I think is the best word to use, but it certainly works. And certainly at the elementary school, it's much easier than it is here, you know? But I think too, what's important is that at the elementary school, they meet as a coordinated care team once a week with their building principal. You know, here, we have it once a month in mental health, but then we also have the child study teams and the attendance meetings. So there's a structure in place.
Thank you. Chris?
All right, just a few questions. So, now that you started this, what has this done to response time for students?
In terms of crisis?
Yeah.
Or in terms of seeing somebody where there's a need?
Both.
Okay, so, let me start with prior to this. So prior to this, we still had two full-time social workers, but we had counseling as a service through some of the, our special ed programs. So our school's social workers did not have the flexibility to meet with students on a non-mandated basis. So we would have students working with our school counselors for the three years that they've been in middle school and our school counselors have exhausted all resources. When we moved to this model, we were able to look at the programs in special ed, do a pull program review, and determine that the needs of those mandated students look different because they're individualized. So that freed up some of the time and availability that our school psychologists had. They're still doing evaluations, they're still doing observations, but it gave a little bit more flexibility. So in order to now streamline the process to be seen, it's a little bit easier because we do have that flexibility where we didn't have as much before. We're still at full capacity and I think we always will be, right? Because you see students for a short period of time, move them on, and then there's always somebody waiting. So to answer the second part, response, so if there is a crisis, what all of our school counselors, psychologists, and social workers wear is a radio. And so through our administrative team, they are always on the radio and available to respond. Oftentimes, it's multiple responders because the school counselor works with all students and then the student who may need that crisis management also works with either one of our psychologists or school social workers. So we have more of that teaming approach, whereas before, we didn't.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, a couple more things. So say a student presents an issue and it comes to the team. I think what I heard was that it comes to the team and then Kristin Connor will divvy up to figure out who, where it goes, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that, and that's working?
That is working, so far. It's a work in progress, but it is working.
You know, it's just tricky because like, I heard what you were saying about like, because students sometimes have academic problems, also have emotional problems.
Right.
So it's like, yeah, well, it's an academic problem, they should go to the guidance counselor, but it's an emotional problem, let's just go to the social worker. So it's like, how?
And sometimes it's both, right? So, our school counselors work with all students, so they know all of the students in this building. And so the team of teachers will first speak with our school counselor about the needs of the student. They'll exhaust all of the efforts and resources that they have and then they'll say, I think at this point, I've done what I can, it's time to move up a tier to either the school psychologist or the school social worker, who may be able to do those wraparound services with outside providers, work with prevention, it could be CPS, it could be a whole host of other providers that need that coordination, but still working with the student and family. So oftentimes, it's almost like it's a tag team, right?
Kristin, you also should mention, there's other committees that we wouldn't, we didn't want to be here till 11 o'clock, but there's our data team meetings where we look at the academics on a regular basis. So if there's academic difficulties, we're addressing those in a different place, but we may determine that, you know what, this goes beyond academics, we need to move this to mental health. So those would be the people.
You know, I just bring it up because it's sometimes, it's tricky, like trying to figure out where, where should the student go? Because the student doesn't need three people every day checking how are you doing?
Right.
They need one person.
Right.
So who should that one person be?
And if there's a clinical need, that's when we move to school social workers, right? If there is a need for assessment and evaluative purposes, we look at our school psychologists who have a little bit more specialized training in that behavior piece.
Okay. And then the last thing, so a student gets placed in a spot, how, how is that, the follow-up data work? So say Johnny has an issue and Johnny is working with the college or the social worker, how does that information get back to the team and then out to the staff?
Team meetings. And I think it's probably, the easiest way to put it is that through that coordination, the school counselors attend those team meetings. If need be, our school psychologists, our school social workers will attend those meetings and then they're communicating what's happening with that student for that period of time. And if that student no longer needs the service, they'll let them know that so that we've got another student who does. So it's constant communication because they're in team meetings multiple times a week.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. The, on, I think it's slide nine, it's the non-mandated, mandated one, can we put that back up for a minute?
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Does that work?
At, yes.
Okay.
At the bottom, and I noticed in answer to Chris's question, you mentioned you're at full capacity. Could you explain what you mean by the notation at the bottom with regard to capacity?
At full capacity?
Yeah. Because my concern is when somebody says to, to us that we are at full capacity, it means that you need more people. And the question is, do you need more people?
So at times, so to be honest with you, at times, of course, right? Because we're a school-based setting, we're not a therapeutic setting, but the needs don't go away, right? And so what we, what we staff for is the number of mandated sessions, which we get through IEP Direct, right? That our school psychologists and our school social workers will always pick up first. What we can't plan for are those non-mandated students. So there may be a family situation, there may be a trauma that happens, there could be grief and loss. You can never plan for that. And those situations, along with the crisis intervention and management, take up a lot of time. And so it's hard when we say we're at full capacity, what we're saying is that our folks are fully scheduled with evaluations, with testing, with their mandated sessions, and non-mandated thus far.
Okay. Given that, have you looked at what, what you're doing with this new structure?
Yep.
And figuring out all, basically, all of the non-mandated needs that come up, looking at creating some sort of data so that you know in a future year, look, you know, over the last year or two years or three years, we've averaged this, therefore we need, you know, a .5 FTE or a 1.0 FTE or something like that. Because it seems like you could have the data with the, with what you're doing.
Absolutely.
And if you need the people, we should hear about it.
And I think because it's a work in progress and we're always looking at those data points, one of the things that we're focused on also this year is that when you look at that triangle, right, and you look at the Tier Two and Tier Three supports, we have a lot of students in this building who receive small group counseling, but because of the mandate, we can only put five students in that group. So depending on the cohort coming up to the middle school will depend on the needs of the sixth graders. The needs don't go away though in seventh and eighth grade. So through that RTI process, what we have found at the elementary level, which I'm sure we're going to find now moving forward, now that we have that initiative here in the building, is that there may be groups that we can or can't run for a specific purpose because we just don't have the manpower, right? Our school counselors have caseloads of up to 300 students and then we're at full capacity here. So it's a lot of massaging and flexibility and being adapted to really what's happening in the building. So I guess to answer your question, is there always a need? You could probably have four or five more staff and we'd fill them too. We're doing the best job that we can to manage it and we will have data points now because this is really our first full year with a coordinated care team to then look at what the needs are moving forward.
Well, when it comes to budget time, you should, you should bring it forward to us. I'm not saying you're going to get it.
Right.
But I am saying that it's something that, you know, the board should be aware of.
Yep.
And we should, you know, be able to consider it. The other question I had was related to attendance. In an early slide, attendance was related to a later start time, some concerns about attendance can be, come challenging with an earlier start time. And then when Mark was speaking, he mentioned that it could be related to health concerns.
I think with the transition to middle school, because it's earlier than the elementary school, it's just an adjustment for our students. I don't know, I mean, Mark can speak to that because he is like our data, attendance data warehouse here.
I think that's what that was referring to, is it's just a transition from elementary to middle school. And then when you transition from the middle school to the high school, you're starting even earlier. So those can present issues sometimes that need to get ironed out.
But you're not, you're not asking about starting the middle school later? Okay.
Nope, not at all.
Just want to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jonathan, the one piece I would interject, because I knew Kristin wasn't going to talk about it. So, Kristin, you've been with us for four years, right?
Yep.
Before Kristin, and Chris, you touched upon this, there was that no central collecting point. So like, principals can't manage that because we're not aware of, like, we had split staff that were moving between buildings. So as a principal, we're not, I'm not calling, for example, Heidi over at Slingerland saying, I have another non-mandated, can you send the, you know, the psychologist over at 12 o'clock kind of thing? So prior to Kristin, we had chairpersons coordinating their departments and sometimes like a psychologist might not talk to a social worker and when a principal would say, or a counselor would say, we got a crisis, who do we go to? Like Kristin has brought that whole piece centric. And Kristin's work with Heather for the psychologist, Sarah for the social workers and the CSE process, like when you think about where we were four years ago, even when Kristin joined us in that first year when we didn't have that CCT structure, the work to coordinate all this, like Kristin knows where all the moving pieces are. And like, as a principal, I can't talk to you about how, like, and Jody and Dave and I have conversations about this, like, I didn't know whether or not, I don't know how I would have answered your question four years ago. Like if you would have asked me, are you at full capacity or not? I could, I, my answer would be, I'm not sure how many, how many non-mandated issues are out there because we didn't have a reporting mechanism, number one, and number two, individuals were keeping their own statistics and in some cases, collecting that through department chairs, but we, that wasn't a centric process in the same fashion that it is now. So to your point, like, this, this year sets our baseline. So we're, we will have absolutely accurate numbers going forward. So when Jody gets all the administrators together in the room and talks about budget, we will have much accurate forecasts going into the future.
Well, I remember the old system because I had a son and a daughter under the old system and, and I see, I'm going to blank on the name.
Carly Gunn.
Carla. And I do remember that old system and I am really delighted that we now will have some data to help us make a better decision as to how we spend the district's money and make sure that it does go to the places where it's needed. So thank you for that.
Thank you for all your support. It's been very enormously helpful. Like to Kristin's point and to reiterate, to see all the moving pieces, like even when parents come into the building on an average day, like you look outside, you see all the cars, you don't realize what a thousand students looks like until you come to our Halloween ball in a couple weeks. And to see all the moving pieces is really hard to do. When you think about how hard or difficult that can be to coordinate, your support of programs like GROW and the individuals that you have in this room, as well as the process that Jody and Dave have built with Kathy and Kristin and Sarah and the rest, it's amazing to think about how much we didn't know, we didn't know, if that makes sense, three years ago.
Well, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Willow, did you?
I did. I had a question about data also, not to sort of belabor it, but the Saratoga program was something that we were really excited about, really supportive of. And I know it's just started, you're at half-capacity, but I'd love a follow-up presentation at the end of the year perhaps around how many students we served, whether they came from the middle school or the high school, what the reason for referral was, sort of any data like that would be really helpful in, in potentially growing that program further. And I had two other quick questions. Obviously with whatever the opposite of non-mandated, I guess is mandated. Goes into an IEP or 504, there's parental involvement consent for non-mandated services. Can you just talk for a quick second about how a parent is notified, whether consent is required, how that piece is handled for the non-mandated services?
It certainly is. So there's no change. The only real difference, I think, and you can jump in at any point, we don't have a formalized meeting, like the CSE meeting does, to put into a document that we are going to provide this service. So what we often hear is that a student has a particular need or is in crisis, we need to respond to it. This is what our goal is. At six to eight weeks, we'll look to see if we've met that goal. Does the student need to continue services? That's a conversation with the family, we're going to continue. It could be for a year, it could be for two years, it could be for three years. Unless that, there is an educational impact that requires a referral to special ed, we would continue having non-mandated students because we have that flexibility. Because it may be a specific time and then maybe they'll take a year off and then they come back to it because of the family dynamic or because of a trauma. and then they come back to it because of the family dynamic or because of a trauma. And so I think it really depends on the need, but there is always communication when it comes to a non-mandated service. And what Jess is mentioning is that there's always a conversation because oftentimes, there is a level of support that's needed outside of school. So referral to another provider or community-based organization is often necessary.
But mandated versus non-mandated certainly doesn't change the level of communication and support from the family.
Yep.
So there's always permission, there's always still communication. So if you feel that a child needs services and a parent says no in a non-mandated environment, they still don't receive the services? Is that what I'm hearing? A parent, yeah, they're, you know, they're a part of the team, so it's good, absolutely.
In an individual or group setting, right, they're still going to have support in a classroom setting from their school counselor with all the lessons that they provide. They'll still have support from their team, knowing that there's an issue, and maybe they stay after to help the students. So there's always ways to support.
Okay. My other question was, we talked about how well it works in the middle school because of the team. And Chris asked how you sort of communicate, and it's because you have team meetings. So what happens when a child then goes to the high school?
So we-
How do you transition that knowledge?
Sure, sure. So we have two dedicated ninth-grade counselors. And so they come down in the spring in eighth grade. And so they'll come down, meet with students for scheduling. They'll meet with the school counselors and school social workers, psychologists to gather information. Because I'm across levels, I often know what's going on with a lot of these students, so I'm also a resource for them. So not only will they meet and greet the students, our ninth-grade administrator will also pop into the cafeteria, so it's a familiar face. Last, this past year, we weren't able to have a program because of construction. So we're having a high school 101 program in two weeks here because of construction. So we do talk about the next level of support. We talk about self-care and wellness. So that's part of our presentation in two weeks. Students know that they can access their school counselor. Students are also told during grade-level assemblies that they can access our school social worker, as well as our student assistance counselor. We have a mindfulness room at the high school. So we try to communicate those little bits and pieces any way that we can. But our students who have been transitioning, I will tell you that this is the first year, that we are taking care of all of those students because we hired an additional social worker. So those non-mandated students who were seeing our school counselors last year are now being seen at that next level and like next tier.
Awesome.
Yep.
I just wanted to thank each of you, I know we said it, but that first slide, which listed sort of all the things about middle school that makes it hard, is really just some of the reasons why middle school is just awful. And I know that you deal with, like, the most awful parts. Hopefully, I'm not offending too many people.
Meredith, did you think?
Well, to piggyback on that, I think a lot of parents are clueless about how to deal with all the changes that happen in middle school and want more information. Do you guys offer presentations, not just to the children who you're communicating with, regarding specific, you know, non-mandated counseling, but just overall presentations to the parents in the community to help us deal with all the changes that we're seeing with our children?
Yeah, in the past, we've done a parent coffee at the beginning of the year where we talk about our guidance program, where the parents have an opportunity to hear about those lessons that I talked about with the self-regulation, mindfulness, things like that, so they can hear more in detail about that. This year, we're, as school counselors, we're going to be presenting American Ed Week along with the administrators. So we encourage parents to come, hear a little bit more about our program and how to support your child.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think the district on a whole has been very supportive with that, inviting people in. I went to the presentation last year, I'm drawing a blank on his name, but this-
Randy Kael.
Oh, Randy Kael's been great. He does those presentations with the social media on the psychologist that came in. I found that very useful as a counselor and as a parent. So I appreciate that the district hosts a lot of information for parents, too.
And a lot more of the parents join the parent advisory to give us feedback on what kinds of presentations they're hoping for.
Yeah. And I don't have a date yet, but I'll throw this out there. A few years ago, we had the Hans Family Foundation volunteers come up and do a presentation, "Raising a Beautiful Child." We are hoping that they're coming again this year. So that would be another opportunity for parents to come in. I just don't have that date. But of course, as soon as we get that, we'll get that sent out.
Thank you.
Thank you again to all of you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the update regarding the district's strategic plan.
Thank you. I feel so hurt they're all leaving. Just kidding, you guys can go. Okay, so I wanted to provide the board with an update on the strategic plan, the metrics. In the updates, I included the updated metrics and the action plans for the year. So I'm just going to quickly go through some of this. And if you have any questions, please just interject. I did, I see Hope is here, she was a member of the original strategic plan. So in following the presentations, I've been going around to the buildings. And we do plan to put something out to the community with updated information. So again, just how are we doing? We made some changes to the metrics, the action plans, and what are some of the things, basically, my messaging and meeting with faculty and staff is how can you help support the district's initiatives? So our mission statement, again, we're going to kind of get this out there this year, do a little rebranding with our website to educate and prepare all students to reach their potential, discover their purpose, and be engaged in members and our new core values of academics, character, community, and wellness. So to, what we did this summer is we went through the data, the metrics. And what I'm showing here are basically the metrics that we met or exceeded our targets. And I want to be cautious that it's one-year worth of data. So, you know, it could be a fluke, it could be right on, we could have just been, you know, outstanding. But these are some of the areas in academics that we met our target or exceeded it. One thing I want to mention is that when we were going through all of the data and going through our metrics, we did discuss the ones we were kind of way far off on or, you know, not sure if we should make adjustments to the metrics based on what we saw this year. And the leadership team really felt like we should leave the metrics as we originally set them. Because with one year, we can't really make any true assessment of, were we right on, were we not? So after next year, if we still, if we need to make adjustments, we thought that would be a better time to do so. So we left the metrics and our targets as for this year and the out-years. So we're about split on the academics. These are the areas that we did not meet our metrics, our goals that we were established. Some we were pretty close and some we were not. And, you know, all of these are based on, a lot of them are based on state assessments. And we all know from state assessments, they vary slightly from year to year. Even on the Regents exams, they vary based on the conversion chart. So that's why we decided that we shouldn't make any changes to those. So we were about split on reaching our goals in these particular areas. Then, taking a look at some of our other core values, these are not all of the metrics, we're just kind of highlighting the ones that we met. So we had some, the percent of parents and community members who rated the quality of education. One of our goals is to increase the number of partnerships at the high school level, particularly getting more of our students out into careers and internship opportunities to get them to explore different things. The annual budget, even though our voter turnout is relatively low, we still met our target. And then looking at some of our wellness, discipline for high school and middle school and elementary is under wellness. And we did meet our targets in our in-school suspensions, decreasing some of our high school discipline referrals in total and also for special education students and economically disadvantaged students. So again, our goal over the next several years is to use more restorative practices, to use some of what you just heard from the Coordinated Care Team to really reduce some of those referrals that we've seen in the past. Again, these are some of the areas that we didn't meet our metrics or didn't meet our targets for year one. I know Judy was very disappointed that we didn't get to that 81%. We only got to 80% of our voters approving the budget.
May 2020 is coming.
Yes, it's our goal. The number, the high school, even though much of the discipline, we did meet the target, we didn't for the out-of-school suspensions. And looking at the middle school, this is an area that we just met with the middle school, talking about discipline referrals and that the need to get those down. And I think implementing some of the RTI, the behavior approaches, restorative approaches. And you can see overall that about 75% of the referrals in the middle school relate to special education and economically disadvantaged students. So really looking at those groups and figuring out better ways to work with them and help them to be more successful because that, those numbers are too high. Then looking at some other pieces of our data, we had some professional development and technology tools. So these are just giving you some highlights of some other areas that we have on our metrics and are continuing to measure. We've invested a lot of time and money into technology as a learning tool in helping teachers see how it can be useful, but also using it appropriately, not just using technology because it's cool or it's there, but that it has meaningful learning experiences. So we did that using Survey Bright Bites, which we had used a couple of years ago. So this was our target. So some of these, this is where we established our baseline. If you remember in the metrics originally, many of the metrics that we decided were important, we didn't have baseline data. So this past year was a year to collect that information. So the Bright Bites survey was part of that. And then, of course, overall score that indicates how technology influences teaching and learning. Again, that was establishing the baseline, and then that would be our goal for the out-year. For character, engagement in extracurricular activities is an important thing for students. We all know students who are connected do much better in school. This baseline data was collected on the school climate survey, which we plan to do again this December. And the diminished disciplinary referrals, this was related to DASSA incidences. Again, we didn't have baseline data for the elementary. We had it for middle school and high school. So some of that is establishing it this year. And eventually, our goal would be to get to no DASSA incidences in 2024. Going along the lines of community service and citizenship, increasing the number of students eligible to vote, passport for good, but also our social studies teachers at the senior level are really working to get, make sure students get registered. And then looking at community, this was, we had intended on getting a metric earlier, but we didn't have Passport for Good up and running. But from what we had this year in the number of students participating in community service, that was 8,996 hours of community service. I anticipate this metric will probably have to increase because we have more, we have all of the high school students using it and all of our clubs and organizations using it this year, which last year, we did not have everyone using it. And then number of community members receiving communications from school. This is from School Messenger. Again, this might go up, but this is what our baseline was when we converted from SNN to School Messenger. And a lot of this wellness relates to the school climate survey. So again, this was establishing the baseline. And you can see much of our target are at 100% in 2024. And this was through a lot of discussions about, you know, is it viable or not? But I think that everyone feels that students should feel safe when they come to school. And 100% of our students should feel safe. So that is a goal of ours. So this year, the baseline was 89% students who feel that they belong. Again, it kind of goes along to safety, but do they feel connected to school? Do they have someone that they feel connected to? Do they have an activity they're engaged in? Same thing for staff, that's a high percentage, 95%. That's great, but we want to try and get that closer to 100%. Again, going back to the school climate, percent of parents who feel like their child belongs, wanting to get that up increased a little bit higher. And 73% for students who report they can talk to a teacher. It is, research shows it's really important that a student feel like they have someone that they can go to at school, whether it be a teacher, a nurse, a hall monitor, anyone that they feel connected to. Students being happy at school, obviously wanting to increase that. This was, the next one is actually from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is administered through the health classes in middle school and high school. And the baseline data from this year was that 29%, so almost 30% of high school students reported feeling sad or hopeless every day for two weeks. And 26% of middle school. To me, that's a very high number of students that report feeling that way. Again, that's the reason we've added more counseling and social work to our programs in the last several years. Social-emotional curriculum, this is what Kristen was referring to earlier in the presentation. K through eight, all of the guidance counselors are doing what's called social-emotional curriculum. It looks a little bit different at the elementary and the middle school. Some of you who have elementary children have probably heard them using terminology, big deal, little deal, things such as that. So this was a kind of a small number of teachers responding to that. So we're hoping that we get a better result next year. And the goal would be that this, what we want staff to see is that the students are using the skills, they're taking away from the social-emotional curriculum and transferring that to other aspects of their day. So they're not just doing it when a school counselor is in, going through lessons, but they're actually using those skills when they're out at recess or in the lunchroom. And we see more positive behavior there. And then the disciplinary referrals, again, for elementary, this was collecting baseline data because they had not been using that data point in the past. So this is across all elementary buildings. And we're only actually doing the referral process for students in grades two through five, not in kindergarten and first grade. And again, you'll still see that the majority of referrals are, again, for special education students and economically disadvantaged students. So I want to talk a little bit about some changes we made to the metrics and why. When we were going through the data and collecting it this summer, we realized that there were some metrics that we thought sounded good at the time, but really didn't give us what we had hoped for. The first one in academics, we had initially had that all ninth graders would earn at least six credits because they would be on track or above for graduation. And ninth grade is a year typically where students fall behind and they have, they struggle to catch up. When we went through the data, though, we realized that students who were in special education or received English Language Learning Services, ENL, were not able to earn six credits because those classes are non-credit bearing. So we felt that they should be included in that metric. So by reducing it to five and a half, students who receive those services can still be included in that metric, and it seemed more fair of our student population. So we changed it to five and a half. We had several metrics related to professional development. And what we found is we really didn't have a good way to measure it because we have some teachers who are going out to conferences, we have some that are in-house. And looking at the, teachers don't typically go to professional development that's not useful or meaningful for their work. So we consolidated those into the average number of professional development hours completed per teacher. We have a good way to measure that, and we can see over time if teachers are participating in more professional development opportunities. Under character, which we've since moved to academics, we had the number of referrals for special education services. And when we talked about that a little bit more, it sounded like we didn't want people to refer students for special education services. And that wasn't the intent of the metric. The intent was to use response to intervention appropriately so that we've tried this, we've tried this, we've tried this. Now, when we refer a student to special education, they're likely to actually need a service. Because our baseline has been, in the last couple of years, of all the referrals that are made for special ed, only about 50 to 60% of those students qualify for a service. That's a lot of time for our school psychologists to be doing assessment, a lot of time for our speech and OTs to be doing evaluations unnecessarily. So by having RTI in place and utilizing those services, the goal would be that the majority of- the goal would be that the majority of referrals that actually are made are indeed needed and students would likely qualify for a service. Under character, one of the goals that we had was to try and measure what percentage of our student population were participating in leadership activities. So for example, if you are a member of Key Club, that's great, you're participating. But if you're the president of Key Club, we wanted to account that as leadership. And originally, when we talked to Passport for Good, we thought they were going to add that feature, but they have not. So we really just don't have a way to measure that. So we removed that one. Under community, we had two different metrics about parents and community members reporting favorable opinions of the district. We measure that on the budget outcome survey. And we don't differentiate between parents and community members. So we just combine that into one measure. For community, number of workshops that support parents in accessing district program. We ended up removing this because the only way to really do this was to have sign-in sheets. And when we have some of our parent workshops, we have 200 and 300 parents. And we just thought that seemed obnoxious to make people sign in before they could go into a program. And we don't really have any kind of way to scan quickly. So for now, we've removed that. And under wellness, we had originally put average daily attendance. And you heard a lot about attendance focus from the middle school. And when we did a little bit more research and started looking at the groups of students who were struggling with attendance, we really came up with a conclusion that we want to know which students are at risk for absentee, chronic absenteeism. Because those are the groups of students who are not being successful academically, who are having discipline issues. So we revised that metric. And I want to just kind of highlight what that looks like. So now, instead of just average daily attendance, because most of our daily attendance is 96, 97 percent. So as a district, that looks great. But when you break it down into the district students, high school, middle school and elementary, but then break it down further and look at our economically disadvantaged students or students with disabilities or English language learners, you can see that those percentages are much higher. So those are the groups of students that we really need to figure out strategies and do more outreach with families to get them into school more regularly. So you can see that for the next several years, our goal is to lessen that gap of those students who are most at risk. And you'll see the same, although we have less students, less percentage of students who are chronically absent, which the state defines as 10 percent or more of enrolled days. There's still economically disadvantaged students with disabilities and ENL students are still much higher than the rest, except for high school. You see that they drive, so they don't have to be here. So I'm not sure how we prevent that unless we take away parking privileges. Start a rumor. Someone tell the high school, no more parking. So some of the action plans that you received, the five-year program reviews this year we're doing for lab, school, world languages and ENL and library. Closing the achievement gaps, you'll see there's a metric that breaks down those subgroups that I was just mentioning on some of our achievement measures as well. Increasing proficiency rates in reading and math in elementary, middle school. The mastery rates for Regents exams. Each of our departments kind of came up with a plan for some of that. Implementing, you heard tonight, the behavior and academic RTI programs, instructional technology. And we began work on looking at secondary level homework and grading policies. We just had a large meeting on that with presenter last week. Providing for professional development on, we talked about generation-ready equity and inclusivity. Programs that inform students about school activities. For example, we had the elementary community fair a few weeks ago. And developing opportunities for participation in leadership and character building and community service. And on the action plans, you have the breakdown of who's responsible, what's our timeframe and what the outcomes are. Collaborating with community partners, promoting district highlights, systems to improve outreach for families who have limited resources. Family mentoring to guide families through the school process and providing workshops to support parents and community members on topics of interest. And for wellness, the social emotional curriculum, which you've heard quite a bit about. Staff with professional development on health and wellness opportunities during the course of the year. Systems of supports for student and staff attendance, which I just mentioned. And you heard about the attendance meetings, the middle school's doing. Safety and security training and sustainability initiatives for some of our, for all of our buildings. So when I've been meeting with the faculty and staff, I've been leaving them with a copy of this and looking at how can all faculty and staff help support our goals. Obviously, school climate, co-curricular activities, behavior intervention and overall wellness for students and staff. Looking at then, what can the teachers in the classroom do? Looking at achievement gaps, graduation, attendance and those connections between home and school. And then breaking it down even further by levels, looking at how are students doing on the assessments? Not only New York State assessments, reading proficiency, but particularly looking at those students who are most at risk, particularly economically disadvantaged, special education students and ENL students. That's my metrics, strategic plan recap. So any questions?
Thank you very much. Next is recognition of visitors on an agenda item. At this time, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to comment on an agenda item, please come to the microphone and state your name.
Hi, my name's Kate Gaffney. I'm a parent of a middle school student and an elementary school student. First of all, I'd like to say I loved the presentation on mental health matters. I think the first time I came to the mic six years ago, it was under a different superintendent and a different board. But at the budget, at budget time, the issue was whether or not we cut a school social worker or we cut modified sports programs. And at that time, I said that not only should physical health matter, but mental health should matter. And I'm just delighted at where we are now as a district in terms of supporting those individuals that were here today that day in and day out may not get the academic scholarship awards or what have you at board meetings, but they help kids every day. So I just wanted to, they're not here now, but I hope that message get passed, gets passed along. And I'm not as good at public speaking as the student senate rep who is able to speak without notes. So, and because it's a late, it's a late hour now, I'm going to read my presentation. On tonight's agenda is the district strategic plan. As you know, one of the four core values in the district plan is wellness, which is defined as enhancing social emotional wellness and balance for students and staff by supporting active, healthy lifestyles and promoted, promoting positive behavior. In that spirit, I want to thank our superintendent and those members of the board and members of the school scheduling committee who have recognized that our high school students need more sleep and that moving to a later high school start time will positively impact both their mental and physical health. For the past six years, I have followed this issue at the local, state and national levels. I am so pleased and excited with the direction that our district appears to be headed on in this issue. I have listened to presentations by other school districts in the state that have successfully implemented later, later high school start times and have spoken directly to administrators in a few local districts to learn from their experience. I have heard that the change has made a positive impact in their schools and for their students without a loss of athletics or educational programming. There has been no regrets and there's been no turning back. The most recent was the Webster Central School District, which just made the change this year. And they reported that they can already see the positive results in their students just 30 days into the school year. Their webinar is on their district's website in case any of you are interested in learning of their experience. I am not able to make all of your meetings in person, but I do watch the videos. And I thank you for videotaping, videotaping your meetings, a shout out. There was one comment made at a recent board meeting that did concern me. It was that our district is looking at the possible scenarios put forth by the consultants with an eye toward minimizing disruption. With all due respect, I think that is the wrong standard. It ignores the reality that our current schedule is in and of itself disruptive to those working parents who have had to adjust work schedules or arrange for before-school care to accommodate a very late elementary start time. But more importantly, based on the science and the medical experts, the current schedule has had a disruptive impact on the physical and mental health of our high school students. Over the years, I have listened to the reports to the board of the results from the annual survey of Bethlehem students. Our high school students have made it known through those surveys that a top concern of theirs is a later high school start time. Therefore, it is my view that as you move forward, decisions should be made with the best interest of those students' physical and mental health as your guiding standard. Impact on staff, parents, myself included, and others should certainly be considered, but not at the expense of our high school students' physical and mental health. Change is not easy. You will make, not everyone will be happy. But through public outreach and education, it is achievable, as has been demonstrated by the success of districts locally, statewide and nationally that have made this change. I thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and for all of your efforts on this important issue. And I apologize in advance because I have a little guy that I got to get home to get to bed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Heather Spitzberg. I have two students at the middle school. Thank you. I would also like to express my thanks for the presentation by the middle school mental health staff. I, my two students are in sixth grade. And I am already very, very impressed with this level of service they've received. Both in the mandated and the unmandated sense. My daughter had hurt her leg. And the nurses were very helpful, as were her counselor and her teachers at coordinating her moving around the school, what to do during gym class, and then also returning to her schedule. So having experienced both the mandated and the unmandated, I, from a parental experience, can attest to everything that they presented as my experience so far. I did want to make a couple of comments about the strategic plan update. Thank you very much for putting that all together. I would like to point out that the data sources, the school climate survey and the youth risk behavior survey, the underlying data in those two surveys only have one question about sleep. And it's not, it's a, it's a question that reads, on an average school night, how many hours of sleep do you get? And I would suggest I would like, when this school is assessing the wellness factor, the addition of additional questions to capture sleepiness or alertness. And I realize that these two surveys are standardized. And I don't know how to account for adding additional questions, if that is, can be. I think the youth behavior is the CDC. And I'm not sure about the, I think the climate survey was Department of Ed. I'm not sure if they have processes for adding questions. But I think it would be helpful to know things like, from the students, especially the high school students, in an average week, do you fall asleep in class? If you do fall asleep in class, is it a morning class, is it an afternoon class? How many days in classes do you miss because you're sleeping? What time do you usually wake up on school mornings? Do you fall asleep while driving a car? Like, seriously, like, these are the kinds of questions I think might be better, help the school district better assess the issue of later start times and measuring over time the improvements that can be made with a change in school type of start times. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment on a agenda item? Moving on, item seven, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through three.
Show move.
I would just like to thank the BOU for the donation to the high school PE department. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through, one through six.
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through 11.
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
Show move.
Second. Did you move it? Did you say show move? Okay, I'll second.
There we go. We're good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. At this point, recognition of visitors on any non-agenda item. If there's anyone who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please come to the microphone. Item nine, future meetings and events. Our next meeting is on November 6th at Eagle Elementary School with a regular board meeting starting at seven with an anticipated executive session at six. On November 13th at the high school, we have a policy committee meeting at 5:30. On November 20th, at Hammagrail Elementary, we have a board meeting starting at seven with an anticipated executive session at six. I'm assuming that's, I'm assuming the dates are.
Typos.
On Wednesday, December 4th is the meeting after that, which is at the high school. Regular board meeting starting at seven, anticipated executive session at six. And the meeting following that is on December 18th at the high school with the meeting starting at seven, anticipating an executive session starting at six. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.